Welcome, everyone, to the first Thursday edition of the Meridian Library District Board of Trustees. This is our regular July monthly meeting, and we are called to order. First up, I would like to, I would move to amend the agenda by tabling items 10 and 11 for a future meeting. And the reason for that proposal is because trustee Knutson and trustee Hart are neither able to attend tonight. They're both excused, and because of the items that were part of 10 and 11, I'd like to have more board members as part of that. So that's my, my motion is to amend the agenda by tabling items 10 and 11.
Sir.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Up next is item number two, public comment. As always, we have multiple options for our patrons to offer comments, including in person in this meeting. Vasil, do we have anybody tonight? Okay. With that, we will move on to item number three, which is the consent agenda. Items on the consented, items on the consent agenda are those considered to be routine, uncomplicated, and not likely to require discussion or face opposition. Supporting information for all consent agenda items is included in our monthly packets, and trustees always have the option to remove any items from the consent agenda for individual consideration. Tonight's consent agenda includes two items. One is the approval of the June 18 meeting minutes, and also a relatively minor job description change for the community librarian. Are there any objections to approving all of the items on the consent agenda? Hearing no objections, the motion passes by unanimous consent. Next is item number four, the monthly financial report, which includes two action items, the approval of the May 2025 financial reports, and also approval of the dispersments for that same period. Mr. Grove and/or.
Hello, sorry. Okay, there we go. I don't have anything major. Emma, I know closed everything out a while back before May, and happy to answer any questions that came up. Everything was pretty standard, so.
Questions from trustees?
Mr. Chair, just for my own edification, I was looking through, and you know, our largest item is property tax receivable. I was curious on if property tax receivable is an indicator of taxes to be received at a later point, as in future revenue, right? Or if it's a receivable as in taxes already received but yet to be released to the library?
Thank you, Director Kohler, Board of Trustees. It's a little bit complicated. The property tax receivable line is an entry by the audit firm every year. There is some crossover between the tax year and our fiscal year. So that property tax receivable encompasses that, and then delinquent taxes. I would love to give you more of a detailed answer, but would also like to consult with our audit firm to make sure that I give you an accurate answer.
Thank you, and that was actually a follow-up question of mine was, you know, coming into this new, I really don't necessarily know what's in each grouping, that kind of stuff. Do we have something that gives even a brief, you know, here's what's in each row or in each line? Usually that's available somewhere.
So, Mr. Chair, trustee Castle. So as part of the budget process that we're about to be going through, starting tonight, and then heading into the special meeting a little bit, but more broadly, the budget hearing in August, we do give more information on the budget process throughout the next two to three meetings, I guess, on what those all entail. What you're seeing, like in the budget pieces, is a rolled-up version. I mean, it takes a lot of work to get to those numbers. But yes, we'll, we'll be going through some of that, both tonight and in the future.
Thank you. And not to speak for Nick or Emma, but I'm sure either one of you would be happy to meet with Garrett and talk about this. Yeah.
No further questions from my end.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Josh, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the May financials as presented and published, along with the dispersment approvals as well.
Let's do it, let's do it one at a time, yeah, unfortunately.
Yep, fair enough. I amend my motion to move that we approve the May 2025 financial reports as published and discussed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the May 2025 dispersment approvals as published and discussed.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Up next is item number five, a presentation on our in-process scheduling software. Nick or Vasil?
I'm happy to take it, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, trustees, for the sake of time, I'm going to give you guys a really quick progress report on the scheduling software. We're working with AI Genius Consulting to develop for the Meridian Library District. I'm gonna show you three flaws in the software we've been using, and three improvements we've made, that just those improvements alone are really going to maximize time. Those are far from all of the features that we'll be implementing in this software, but I'd like to, you know, just show you where we're at, and happy to answer any questions afterwards. And go ahead. So LibStaffer, the software we've been using. So we're gonna do a little presentation to switch a shift. So for staff members' privacy, on the left-hand side, I've grayed out all their names, but this is kind of what a daily schedule looks like, a staff timeline, if you will, from, you could see schedule blocks from eight in the morning until eight at night. So if we, if this person at the top, that off-desk shift they have from one to two, if we needed to change that, we would click there. We'd have to change the time, the start time. We'd have to select that, we'd have to change, change the end time, excuse me. Then we'd have to rename it if, if it was another location, and that is not a dropdown. That's manually have to, you know, rename. And then we would have to assign it to another person or to the same person. Meanwhile, the scheduler we're working to develop, next slide, please. If you look at Betty Anderson, second from the top, the, the shift, the lighter color, we could literally grab it and drop it. And so that right there, those clicks, those steps, really add up in, when you need to change shifts. So that's example number one. This, could you go back a slide down, please? This is kind of the current view. We'll, we'll touch a little bit more on that, but there's, there's multiple views, multiple options we could look at. So this is all dummy schedules, you know, fake, fake accounts, et cetera. We're just looking to develop it. And we did like that left-to-right view that LibStaffer offers, but we, we need a lot more from it. So let's go next slide, please. So LibStaffer, Staff Timeline View shows unscheduled staff. So that requires a lot of scrolling. So if we have, you know, 30 people on the staff, you're gonna have to scroll, and it's gonna show you all these blanks. So as you can see, this is the top of the page. You see very many blanks, and then you'd have to scroll down. Then you see the bulk of the schedule. Next slide, please. With the MLD scheduler, we have the option to expand and collapse information, as well as view stats and team assignments. So just to preface some of that, stats. We, we have certain statistics for our positions, on how much time they're required to spend in public-facing roles on desk, as opposed to doing projects in the back room. So those are kind of highlighted there. If you look at the first few names, let's go to Daniel Gomez. Could you go back a slide, please? Daniel Gomez, 87.5%. So we could kind of see, are we overscheduling or underscheduling individuals? On the left there, you could see, it says Team C there at the bottom. So we have different teams led by different supervisors, who will be working in different, different block schedules, which I've presented in the past. So this is a new implementation in the software that will help keep things organized. So anyways, these two folks, Thomas Green and Lisa Perez, are not scheduled. So we could toggle up top where it says, "Show staff with scheduled shift." So if we go next slide, you toggle that, they disappear. So now, we want to say, we want to simplify this. Now we're gonna toggle, show stats and show teams. So if we remove the stats, it cleans it up. And if we remove the teams, it cleans it up even more. So as you can see, this view is just much easier to navigate and look at. We hope to have, we have monitors in back rooms right now that show people's schedules. So while they're in and out of the back room throughout the day, they could just take a glance, and Sarah Diaz could say, "Okay, I'm on lunch from 11 to 12, cool," and go about her business. So this just makes it much easier, as opposed to having to go to a, you know, desktop or a, you know, laptop or whatever, and scroll up and down, try to find your name. So that's another simplicity. But more importantly on that is the, the statistics and the teams and the organization there, especially statistics. I think one thing Director Grove and I have really worked to implement is, what, how many hours on desk should a 19-hour library assistant be working? How about a 40-hour library assistant versus a 40-hour librarian versus a manager? Those are all gonna vary based on their job description. So these statistics that I showed earlier are gonna be really helpful in making sure we're, we're meeting those things to make sure people are making best use of their time. Next slide, please. So this is.
Real quick, Mr. Chair, I would add, the stats piece is also incredibly important for us as we have grown outside of just a branch, at, you know, just a main branch at Cherry Lane, and then having a satellite branch. What is, what's happening over time was there was not consistency with what a 19-hour library assistant at one location was expected to do versus a 19-hour library assistant in another location. And so in conjunction with the job descriptions that we've been updating, with the org chart that we've been updating, all of that kind of feeds into our staffing model. And our staffing model then needs to be, we need to know if it's actually being done, so that when a manager comes to us and asks, "Well, I need, you know, four more full-time staff," we can look and say, "Show me the stats. Show me where it has deviated from what we've planned," so that we know what, what you actually need. And so we can have that consistency across all of the locations, so.
Thanks for the context. So here's just one more example of something that's been a pain in LibStaffer. So we have a shift timeline, which is really service points. So let's go next slide. If you look at the bottom, that's the opener. That's the three folks in this case that are scheduled to open. If we need to change that, we have to click it. And as you can see, there's, there's two blue checkmarks there. That's because one shift was created for three people. Three people were assigned to this shift. If one of those calls out, or if we need to completely move all three to different things, we're gonna have to replicate this three times. So that's just, instead of being able to drag and drop like, like I'm about to show you guys. So, and then we've actually renamed that shift timeline to service points, because, you know, when we think shift, you think nine to five, 10 to six, et cetera. So these are really service points, not, not shifts. So we've then, we're gonna be able to customize service points at each location. So now we could look at front desk, reference desk, et cetera. With this view additionally, it's really nice. We could look at that 11 to 12 timeframe and say, "Hey, where's everyone at? We need to, we need to move some people around." So if you click next slide, that's how easy it is to, to shift people around. If you saw that little animation there, would you go do that one more time?
Vasil.
Yep. So if we needed a, why do we have four people from 10 to 11? Let's add two from nine to 10. It's just, again, click and drag, which it seems so simple and so silly, but when you're having to click and enter in things manually and select timeframes, it really sucks up a lot of your time. And that's some of the biggest feedback we received from managers and supervisors, shoot, probably over a year ago, when we were kind of asking them, "How much time a week do you each spend on scheduling?" And the numbers were too high to, it just, you know, that, that was really what sparked this idea and led us to where we're at. So as you can see, there's, it's still brightly colored and customizable, and there's gonna be a lot more to come. I was just working with them on Google integration between the Google calendars that we use and the scheduling software, so they could speak to each other. And we're getting close to the beta testing stage, and which point we'll invite some of our scheduler, supervisors, managers, et cetera, to really stress-test it and, and see what's working, what's not, so we could, you know, make sure we don't let anything slip through the cracks before the software's complete. So these are just three examples of how it's already better than the existing software. Trustee Castle, you had asked about other scheduling softwares. Director Grove, prior to my time at MLD, led kind of a, a team to do a lot of research on, on softwares that were built out for libraries, as well as other softwares. And LibStaffers, where we settled at, in my experience, in other libraries, we've, we've tried it all, and none of them are perfect. And since, since I met Director Grove three years ago, he said, "If only we could build a software that does what we need it to." And so that's where we're at. We're very optimistic, very excited, and, you know, happy to present more next month. Any questions?
Great, thank you. Questions? Garrett, Josh? I'm assuming that each day doesn't start from scratch. There's some automation for features, building out a feature schedule and all of that?
Absolutely. In, in, in this version, you could see right next to the service points that's highlighted, it says templates. So we're actually gonna be building out templates, but some of the feedback I had to the developers yesterday was to move that off of there and to be able to create templates. This was based, again, on, on staff feedback is, whether it's the staff timeline or the service points, it's all the same events that are created in the calendar system. So different folks, depending on how many service points they need to fill, how big their staff is, they, they will use the different views to create their schedules. So that's actually something we, we spent most of our meeting yesterday talking about. So being able to create templates for, for per person, per hour, per day, per week, per month. In, in an ideal world, what does my Tuesday schedule look like? And then being able to copy that and import it into future weeks, months, et cetera. So that's something that we hope to have ready by next month. And, you know, if, if you guys want to see more next month, we're happy to do, you know, show you where we're at.
Okay?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, can I ask about what the servicing model will be post-implementation of the tooling? So, you know, tools go down, they, just as how life goes, right? Oh, and I worry about a world where something unique happens in this tool, and we don't have support.
That's a great question. Director Grove, you, you helped lead that conversation with the developers.
Yep. So the support is something that is kind of built into the, the product and will be maintained over time. One of the things that we had is we'll have regular check-ins. There'll be service modules that we can purchase if we need them. And there will also be routine backend updates to make sure that we're staying security compliant and things like that. And so that, that has been built into the contract. Either depending on which pieces it is, if some of it is natively built in, and some of it is built in with the opportunity to add service modules, depending on the service needs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Vasil, thank you for the demonstration and look forward to seeing more.
Thank you all.
Item number six, director's update.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will try and keep my pieces somewhat brief. So just gonna do a bullet point list this month on the, the beginning pieces. So in the, in your board packet was included a benefit survey that our benefit advisors provided to us. And I would like to say that we toot my own horn, and for my team, we, we are doing a fantastic job in comparison to our peers in, in a lot of ways with the benefits that we provide to our staff. I think we go above and beyond in providing a, a good benefit package, and we work very, very hard to keep it at a controlled cost, while maximizing the benefits to our staff. And, you know, we'll, we continue to seek feedback from staff, see what's out on the market, when the open enrollment is nearing, and, you know, do our best to, to continue keeping those benefits where they're at. We updated the story walk, which is at Kleiner Park. We've been doing that for several years now, and it is brown bear, brown bear. And so that, it's a fun walk experience out there at that park. The hub, which is our Intranet for staff, is an unwieldy beast, be just due to the fact that over time, you know, it's hard to keep some of those things perfectly in check in terms of making sure all the links are active, all the information's updated, and that it's still meeting the goals of being a usable resource for staff. So we've been undergoing an audit on that to make sure that all that information is updated and is usable as possible for our staff. I will say, it is light years away from what I made one night, like 12 years ago, sitting at home being frustrated that I couldn't find anything, when I built a prototype that we ended up using for three years. So I'm much more appreciative of someone taking the time to do this the right way. And then one of the things that I wanted to just kind of briefly talk about was an internet-only library card. We don't currently have this. I'd like to bring this forward in the future, maybe August or September, for you all to, to add into one of our, for our lending guidelines policy. But what I, what we're looking at is the feasibility of being able to have a library card that is only for accessing the internet. And so the reason that we would have this would be, let's say you have a relative that is visiting from Florida, and they're gonna be here for a week. Well, rather than getting a guest card, we can create an internet library or internet, internet-only library card using your Flor, their Florida ID. And so they would be in there as having a library card, but it would be an internet-use library card only. It helps us reduce the use of the guest pass system, which has somewhat been abused in the past. And so we've kind of pulled that back. It's not the first option for people. And the reason that it's not the first option is, what we were finding is, a lot of the library users that came in and used our computers were using guest passes, even though they live in Meridian and could have a Meridian library card. And so by pulling that, that immediate access point out of the public area, we still have the ability to do guest passes, but they've been cut drastically down. And we would like to be able to offer that same level of service to anybody with an ID to have a, a library card, even if they don't live here, because they wouldn't be using our materials, but they'd be using the computers the same way that they already are using it with the guest pass. Also, there's some people, individuals, but also families that don't want someone to have the ability to check things out. And in large part, in the past, I've had parents who would let their kids come use the computers, but they weren't, let them check out items, because they would lose the materials and rack up a $500 bill on all the lost materials. I would be lying to say if I didn't consider that for my own children, because they lose more books than I'm proud to admit at this point in time. So just trying to give people the option to make the, the decision on how to use the library the way that they want to use it. A lot of other libraries have had it, several have it now. But just wanted to kind of give you all a heads up that that's probably going to be coming your way. So if you have questions about it, you know, please reach out in the next month or two, and I'd be happy to go into it with more detail. Cherry Lane renovation, I will touch on it here, but I'll go into more detail. Three agenda items from now. But in broad terms, we are making progress. We are going through and trying to get the certificate of zoning compliance. That is what, what will allow us to get some of the permits that we need for demolition, for site redevelopment, and for building renovation permits itself. And so we're going through all that. It, I'll get into the, the slog of it, but I'll say, the other side of it, that's maybe like the softer side of it, is we're doing all of the, the planning of, how do we move the collection out of Cherry Lane and into Orchard Park, into Pinnacle, into Unbound, onto the Bookmobile, and into storage? And what do we then not have room for? And we need to weed, you know, they've been doing that. Jenny, her team, and Mary and her team have been doing that for several months, is, you know, pruning down the collection. But there'll be a bigger pruning down as, as we get into the move-out stage of Cherry Lane as well. We're doing the same thing with furniture, equipment, technology. What can we use elsewhere? What can we store and use later, and what do we need to discard? And so we're going through all of those planning processes, because we have program supplies. What do we keep? What don't we keep? And how, and if we do keep it, is it going in a building? Or is it going into long-term storage? Or is it going into a short-term storage? So all of those things are kind of going on in the background as part of the planning process. So lots of lots, if you want to know, like, shelf dimensions, go ask Jenny, because I'm trying to forget all of the, the measurements right now, but we've done, been doing a lot of linear foot work to figure out how much we can keep it open to the public. And then strategic plan is something I've been talking about for a long time. We are in the process of moving a supervisor off of one of the Cherry Lane teams and over into admin temporarily during the closure of Cherry Lane. And they will be helping us kind of project-manage the strategic plan. So we have some of the work being done in three different committees right now, in addition to Dan's team. And so that supervisor will be kind of helping corral those groups and, and guide us through the, the last, or I mean, the main parts of the strategic plan update. Our, our goal for the strategic plan at this point is to have a survey and focus groups done in, I believe, September. And having a completed strategic plan available to present to you all for adoption in December is what we're targeting at this point. If we can get it done sooner than that, we will have it in November. I really doubt we'll have it in October. We just don't have the capacity, I don't think, to, to put it, pull it all together with the survey and the focus groups and all the community data to properly have it in place the way that is expected of us. So I think November would be the soonest you'd be seeing that come in front of you. But we're making good progress. Update from the foundation. I love the foundation. They're doing a great job raising money for us. They received a grant from the Bessie Minor-Swift Foundation for a little over 3,000. And in the room right next to us is where that money went, and that was to refresh the sensory room to make sure that it was up to date and continuing to meet the needs of the individuals who use that sensory room. So if you get a chance, I'd pop in and take a look at some of the updated furniture and manipulatives that are in, in that space. Marketing, our views are going up on both Instagram and Facebook. We're making some progress. One of the things that we'll be looking at in the future is, you know, setting some metrics to, to gauge this against a little bit more firmly. But for now, we're very pleased to see that our viewership is rising, and we're, we're getting more eyeballs on our content. And so we're, we're having a lot of success in the, in terms of having pluses across the board on there. And I will be happy to hand this off to Vasil, so he can talk about all the beautiful things the branches are doing.
Thank you, Nick. First and foremost, STEAM Labs and, what is that, Pepto-Bismol or? Yeah, I don't think it's Pepto-Bismol. What makes that? Alka S, which I don't think they used. Mentos, that's right. I was like, we don't give medicine to patrons, ever, for the record. But we're having fun in the summer. I wanted just to highlight some things of, of some of the fun activities. As you could see, people are showing up to our libraries. There was a sidewalk chalk festival at Pinnacle, as you can see at the top, top-left-hand corner of the photos. Also, Pinnacle, they had a really busy month, and Ms. Page over here, I'm sure, could attest to that. Books and Blues concert, which attracted this large crowd there. And then we've had the Bookmobile in preparation for Cherry Lane closure kind of is scouting out the Meridian parks and, and in turnout. Where, where are patrons showing up to the parks? So they've had a lot of attendees, as you, as you may have seen in Director's report, a lot of interactions with patrons at parks, which is great, because when Cherry Lane closes. closes, the plan is to deploy the bookmobile more and really have public stops like that. Both Orchard Park and Cherry Lane have had summer movies at the library, which are well-attended. Steam Labs are always a big hit. There was one with drones recently, which I'm sad I missed. I guess that one was a big hit. Touch a Truck came. There were so many cool truck photos, I couldn't upload them all. And Unbound, like always, doing cool, techie stuff with laser engraving rolling pins this last month. So, summer is well underway at the library, summer reading programs going great, we're having fun. Another thing that takes place in June every year is the big ALA Annual Conference. We're happy to say we were able to send four people there this year. So, we had two Cherry Lane supervisors, one Unbound supervisor, and one Cherry Lane Associate Librarian. So, some representation from several branches and several positions. And there was many sessions that they attended, including library management, AI ethics, and libraries, empowering library support staff, which for supervisors is very important, because when we say library support staff, that's pages, that's library assistants, that's associate librarians, that's people who do not hold the title librarian. And so, that's a big majority of our staff. So, and then assessing library collections, which as the Director of Grove was saying, is we're doing a lot of these days. So, they had a great time and like we did with the LibLearn X Conference in January, we're going to be developing a kind of internal presentation for our staff. So, these four folks could share what they learned in the conference with the rest of our staff. It's always really, you know, empowering, exciting, and inspirational to attend these things. So, we're happy we got to send four people. And that's it for me.
Mr. Chair. So, just one thing you forgot to highlight of those four people. We didn't have to pay for four people, right? Wasn't one of them at least on a scholarship?
Yes, yes. Yes, our associate.
Don't forget to leave out those important details.
Yeah, sure, sure. Our associate librarian had part of the majority, if I'm not mistaken, of the cost covered through the Spectrum Scholarship that ALA awarded them. So, yeah, thank you, Josh.
I think that's fantastic and certainly an important data point to include.
Yeah.
More of those we get, you know? Great stewardship of funds.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair, I would add on that front. I don't know the exact number, but there's at least one or two that got first-time grant money from the Idaho Commission for Libraries to attend as well. And so, a large chunk of that was paid for by them. And I would say, in my report, I didn't put it on there, but the piece that I talked about going to Seattle was paid for by the Library of Congress for that piece. And so, going forward, the Idaho Commission for Libraries has informed us there will be limits on how many of those will be available per library. Unfortunately, they put a static number of 10 per library versus a percentage, which I would argue is a more equitable way. I prefer equitable to equal. But we'll take what we can get, but we, as we get into budget things, we do highly value the professional development opportunities. It pays dividends to our library and our community by doing those things.
Great, anything else from the director? Okay. Item number seven, we have a policy review and approval for the public record policy.
Mr. Chair.
A lot of words on this one.
This is a lot of words. This was legal counsel. So, we just let legal counsel go hog wild on this one.
That was my first question, so good, okay.
This was, this was all him. This came about largely from a piece of legislation that was passed in this last legislative session in Idaho and went into effect on July 1st. And so, this was in regards to that updated bill and making sure that we're keeping our policies in full compliance with the law as those laws change. And so, it wasn't on our radar, it was brought to our attention. And so, we wanted to make sure that we, as quickly as possible, made sure, got this addressed in front of you. And rather than us muddling our way through the confusing and contradictory bill that was passed, we handed it off to legal and had him do it instead.
Just out of curiosity, and I don't need an exact number, how many public records requests do we get in an average year? Is there a range?
Prior to me being director, we were averaging three to five a year. And 80 to 90% of those were typically companies scraping public entities for information on how to sell their products to government agencies. Since I've been director, we're probably averaging six to seven a year, none of which are being scraped. That number has drastically gone down in the last year and a half. And some of those are a little more benign in the sense of other government agencies seeking to get information in regards to like pay structures and things like that. But ideally, you know, those are more conversational pieces, but some places choose to do the public record route instead, which six one way, half dozen another for us. But it's not as much as it was when I first came on, but it's still more than it was before.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions on the changes to the public record policy? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Josh, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the public record policy as presented in our packets and discussed.
Thank you.
I second.
And we have a second further discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Up next is our budget presentation portion of the July meeting, which is a regular part of this meeting. Nick and Emma, I would ask, as you, before we get too much into this, if you haven't already thought about this, give us a quick timeline for the benefit of new trustees and...
Happy to do so, and then I will hand, I'll do the easy part and I'll hand the rest of it off to Ms. Emma, so she can do all the numbers. So, as part of the timeline, we start building the budget really. We've already, in some ways, started the budget for the next few fiscal years already in terms of the structure and pieces like that. We begin in earnest for the upcoming fiscal year, which starts on October 1st and runs through September 30th. We start in earnest on that in January, February. We start getting staffing models from our managers. And then, we start doing a needs-based assessment of where we're at within the current fiscal year and what we project to need into the next, into the new fiscal year. That continues all the way until today, when we formally present the draft budget to you all. From here, you'll have a few weeks to sit with it. I would say, at the end of this meeting, we don't need an action item, but we do need to have essentially the direction to schedule the special meeting, preferably October 5th or 6th. We prefer August, the other a month. August 5th or 6th. Sorry, I was thinking of my kid's birthday. We don't get the numbers from, the final numbers from the county until the Monday, the 4th. And so, we need a little bit of time to be able to find, like, we have the numbers at about 98% accurate from what the county has kind of projected to us. But until we have those final, final numbers for the LTUs, we won't be able to like really lock that in. Once we get that, we need to have a special meeting, at which point you all instruct us to post it into the newspaper. And then, we will have our already pre-scheduled budget hearing, which has been posted since February. And that is at 6:45 on August 20th, directly before our board meeting for August 20th. So, in general, that's kind of the broad strokes of what we're doing. Our fiscal year again runs October to September. We get our big paycheck, in the sense, our big payment, that's where it goes, where the big payment comes in two pieces that are not aligned with our fiscal year. We get it in late January, early February, and then we get the next payment in August. And so, from October 1st until that first payment, we have to use our reserve funds to carry us to that. So, when you're looking at this and you see a carryover balance year to year, we try to stay within 40 to 50% with the sweet spot being 44 to 47% of our annual budget being held in a six-month reserve fund that allows us to get from the beginning of the fiscal year to that first tax installment payment in late January, early February. And so, that's pretty much the basis of it. And then, I'll maybe stop, because I don't want to step on Emma's toes. But I can now talk about budgets forever, so I won't. And I'll let Emma give a little bit better rundown of where we're at.
That's accurate, that's a really good summary of how we get to where we are today. It is a grassroots budget. We scrutinize every single budget line, every single line is analyzed for a need basis. No fewer than 21 Excel workbooks or Google workbooks go into the development of this budget. So, there is a lot that goes into the development. After the dates occur that Director Grove reviewed, the county will review our budget, formally approve it, and then we're locked in, and that happens sometime in October. So, we have a little bit of a waiting period, but you know, no news is good news. So, what I'd like to do today is go over high-level with you all, the FY25 amended budget, and then FY26 proposed budget. I'm giving you high-level information, and I'm hoping after I hit the high-level points with you, we can have a roundtable type of discussion where you all can inquire about any areas that you would like to see more detail on. We have department managers here today that have large areas of budget responsibility, so they can answer those detailed questions if you do want to go ahead and drill down anywhere. So, for fiscal year 2025, we have an expenditure reduction of $754,000. We have increased revenue.
Real, real quick, just for overabundance of clarity, fiscal year 2025 is the fiscal year that we are currently in, that ends on September 30th.
So, we have, you know, a reduction of expenditures and increase of revenue that delta's out at $973,000. So, we have $973,000 essentially in excess funds for fiscal year 2025. What you have before you is a budget that proposes putting $250,000 of that excess into the general fund reserve, and that's to keep that general fund reserve at the sweet spot, as Director Grove just discussed. We also have $723,000 proposed to transfer over to capital repair and replacement, and we are proud and pleased with that number. We ask our department managers to do their best to cut their budgets this year while providing, you know, good library service to our patrons and our community. And we are thrilled that we were able to scrape back that amount of funding. That will directly impact the Cherry Lane renovation and the FFNE that we are able to procure when we get there. So, we're really, really happy to come to you with, you know, a budget reduction, not a budget increase request. So, this $754,000 is coming from the following places. First of all, we're seeing a reduction to personnel of $320,000 and change. This is due to attrition. We also have a hiring freeze, so we have no backfills on that attrition. And then, early in the fiscal year, we did a reorganization of the operations division that switched some positions, reorganized things, and reduced our budget need. Our collections budget is being reduced by $181,000. That is impacted by our collections need with the Cherry Lane closure. And we asked that department to provide us with a budget that was reduced but met the needs of the public. And our material services manager is here today and can elaborate on the nuances of the crossover between those two things, as well as Director Grove, he can elaborate on collections quite well. Our operating expenses are reduced by $306,000. This is due to the internal development of the strategic plan and facilities comprehensive plan. We had budgeted to have some consulting on these, and we brought it in-house. So, that was able to save us about $120,000. We also, knock on wood, made it through without the Cherry Lane HVAC breaking. Really bad.
I'm just gonna jump in here and say, if my next piece on when we close Cherry Lane is impacted, you all can reference this point in time right here, because the reason that we would have to close early was if the HVAC goes. So, if it does, I'm blaming Emma right here and now on the record.
Yeah, yeah, no pressure, no pressure. So, we had budgeted aggressively to be able to maintain that HVAC and keep it going. And then, all hands on deck, we ask every department manager to cut back expenditures where they could and to do the best they could, knowing that most of those department managers had their facility updated and renovated or built from scratch. And this was the last facility on that list, we need everybody to pitch in and help us get this money saved for Cherry Lane. So, you know, that being said, that's the expenditure high level I have for you. I'm happy to drill down into the lines, into the nuances of these, you know, 21-plus workbooks. Let's talk about the revenue that we've seen an increase on. So, our miscellaneous income increased $73,000 over budget projections. This is due to a refund on the Pinnacle project. They held a large contingency on that project, and when everything settled up and the dust settled, we got a refund of around $50,000. We were also selected by a grantor to be an independent contractor on a grant that they're running. And Assistant Director Ivanov can give more detail on that, but we were hand-selected on this grant to be an independent contractor. So, we actually have received $20,000 in revenue, just to go ahead and do that project. We received $150,000 more in interest than we anticipated we were going to. This is from the well-performing local government investment pool. Our average return over the last 12 months has been 4.56%, so we're happy with that. And then, some adjustments in revenue, we have grants less than expected, no surprise there with our current, you know, grant market, it was a tough go, and our meeting room income is higher than projected, and then some miscellaneous, miscellaneous true-ups. So, that's the expenditures and revenues that get us to where we are today to kind of talk about our fiscal year 2025 amended budget.
Mr. Chair, I will add, the reason we're seeing four columns on the paper rather than three is because we did have that amended budget that we just recently did, but that was only for that, for the allocation of the money that was already in the LGIP accounts, but just to do it for contract purposes for Cherry Lane renovation, there was no money changing, it was just moving a line from one side to the other, essentially. But this will be actual movement of pieces. And so, rather than just seeing the amended budget this year, you're seeing two amended budgets, because we did see that very confined budget amendment earlier. So, just wanted to give clarification of why it looks different than it has in the past.
That's the high-level points that I brought, I'm happy to delve into any areas. And as I mentioned, department managers are here and can provide, you know, operational explanation behind any of these areas.
Thanks, Emma. So, the changes that you highlighted on the slides are the ones represented here in column three, the difference between column two and column three, is right? Is that?
Correct.
In general, in a general sense, okay.
Correct, yeah, because column two was, reflects increased budget for capital, but didn't really take into account those day-to-day operations.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd say, really, it's one and three are right. Two is there as a reference point because of the capital pieces that we moved, but one and three are what you would traditionally see when we do the amended budget. So, that's really what you're comparing with, if you're doing a true up comparison from what we would normally do.
Okay. And then, the items for fiscal year 26 are, that's what's proposed going forward, and that's what we'll be hearing more about in two weeks?
What we'll be hearing more about after the fiscal year 25 amended discussion? Or I'm happy to buzz through fiscal year 26 as well?
No, let's finish 25 first.
Okay.
Sorry. Garrett, Josh, questions?
Mr. Chair, I believe that if I heard this correct...
Mr. Chair, I believe that the, if I heard this correct, the request is essentially that, you know, we can ask questions now, but really I guess I kind of missed the deadlines of when we, you kind of want a approval on the proposed budget, right? So can we get a little bit more on that?
So Mr. Chair, I can answer that. This is your chance tonight to weigh in on if you want us to move money around to make changes. This is the time that you can instruct us to go back and rework anything that you don't like here. We will then do that, prepare it, and then when we have the special uh, board meeting to approve it for publication, um, that's the, the final time that you get to like weigh in on anything that doesn't sound quite right. And then once at that board meeting, it's usually a ten-minute board meeting at most, it gets approved for publication, which then goes into the newspaper to allow the public to see what the budget is going to be proposed as. And then the budget hearing will be at six forty-five on the twentieth. The public then can come and speak about the budget at that budget hearing. Uh, once the budget hearing is closed, we will begin our regular monthly board meeting. And within the regular monthly board meeting, um, you all approve the budget for the, uh, that fiscal year. And it, it is incumbent upon us that we get it approved at that point in time because we have to have it submitted by the absolute latest. I think it's September fifteenth or something like that, but really we need to have it done by the end of the month of August. Um, if we don't, we're in dire straits. Um, and so, uh, now's the time to, to make changes. That, and we can make tweaks, you know, when we have the special meeting, but now is the time for anything that is major that you all see that for, uh, to give us the direction to, to go fix it.
Jenny, I am interested in how you decide what, how to narrow the collection. How do you make those decisions?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Chair trustees, so one of the things that I want to start with is that the budget that we had, so, so what we have here, collections was nine hundred thousand something.
Yeah.
And when we, when we proposed last year, um, and at the time we developed that budget, we didn't have all the details on what was going to happen with Cherry Lane. So I needed to be able to purchase for Cherry Lane at the rate that I normally would. Um, when those dates started falling into place, that the closure was happening this year, we were not interested in purchasing books at a huge volume, as I was also needing a bunch of books to go out the door at a huge volume to prepare for us to close. So we reduced a lot in buying for Cherry Lane that we might have otherwise been putting money there. Um, what you can't see from just the line that says collections is that we also moved things from print to digital. So knowing that we have to, that our community still needs to have materials for the next couple of years and our shelves space is limited with Cherry Lane closing, um, more access to, to digital materials as I've also demonstrated before, is already in high demand is, is one way for us to continue to provide that. Um, and I believe, um, I don't have a copy of the report in front of me, but the collections, um, I'm looking at things like usage. I'm looking at things like relative use. I'm looking at things like how many times uh, items circulate at the collection level so that we can say, well, everybody's trying to do puzzles. We're gonna buy more puzzles. We are not gonna buy as many um, adult fiction materials in X, Y, or Z Dewey number, um, based on the demand from the public.
Mr. Chair, trustees, I would add a few things to that, a little bit of nuance. If something like puzzles is of high demand, we can buy those, but the question then becomes how many of those are checked out at a time? So if we look at, let's say, the easy readers and eighty-five percent is checked out and only fifteen percent is on the shelf, we actually have the ability to buy more to be able to get up the, the, to fill the shelf. But if they all come back, then we're, we're out of luck. We don't have anywhere to put them. Typically on most, if we generalize the entire physical collection, you're looking at trying to have about thirty percent of your collection checked out at a time, at a time. If you have less than that, your shelves start getting really tight. If you have more than that, your shelves might look empty, even though you have a lot of stuff. And so it's a, a balance of making your shelves full, but not too full so that people can find it. But having the right things that would normally be in those shelves, but it's checked out. So it, it's a really hard balance that is not just a, a real blanket statement um, for each collection type, um, but each branch is a little bit different. And one of the things that we were looking at doing with this amended budget is getting more shelves into Orchard Park and Pinnacle as, as much as we can. Um, even though we might not be buying more materials to come in, we're gonna be loading them up with a lot of materials from Cherry Lane, uh, which is, or was at least over, over uh, stocked in several collections. And so while the purchase of some new materials won't be there for a little bit, um, with this amended budget, we, we're actually increasing the availability of those books in the branches that we will continue to have open.
Thank you. So if I was to summarize, if somebody asked me on the street, what's changing here, the, the summary here for the, for the overall proposed amended would be removing the two hundred and fifty thousand into the, to the reserve, six-month, six-month reserve. And then the other savings, which is seven hundred and twenty thousand, is earmarked and ready to put into the capital repair and replacement fund.
Yes, two hundred and fifty thousand into general fund reserve, seven hundred and
Twenty-three, four, two, six.
Into capital repair and replacement.
Which is earmarked for Cherry Lane.
It is.
Okay.
It is. And earmarked for FFNE really is, is where we're at with that funding. This specific money will likely go to FFNE.
Okay. Thanks. All right.
Mr. Chair.
Josh.
Uh, I just wanted to throw out there one more thing for everyone's edification that what we're seeing are, are the kind of mid to end-stage maneuvers on a chessboard of financial foresight going back several years. At the end of the day, I kind of like to compartmentalize in my brain. We typically have a ten million dollar annual budget. Six million goes to people, three million goes to operations, one million goes to collections. That keeps it simple in my brain. All the other multimillion-dollar components come down to capital improvement projects that voters proved and voters, the voters trusted, uh, the staff to make these things happen through long-term leases or accepting, uh, land uh, donations from Brighton to, you know, all these different financial instruments. And at the end of the day, I, I'm, I'm in awe at, uh, just how good a job they've done. As stewards of taxpayers' money and with creative financial instruments to, uh, achieve the mission objectives. So, good job. Especially a good job to all the branch folks that you mentioned that cut their budgets and tightened their belts and made things happen for the benefit of Cherry Lane, which it, you know, we, we're just a system of branches, but I, I did notice on scheduling software, it still said main library. And, uh,
Those are placeholders.
Yeah, fair enough. Great job.
Thanks, Emma. If you want to go on to the twenty-sixth, that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Director Cummings, yes, we are uh, pleased that throughout our entire organization, uh, from grade one all the way through grade twelve, our staff are cognizant and concerned about taxpayer dollars and do make good purchasing decisions. And sometimes we have to encourage them to purchase what they need to do their jobs. So they're definitely diligent with their funding. Okay, so moving on to the last column on the number jumble that you have here in front of you, this is the proposed budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six. So starting in October, going until next September. So again, I'm gonna hit on the high points and then happy to drill down on any of these buckets, sub-buckets that you guys um, would like more clarity or more information on. Proposal is to take the full levy increase allowed. You know, it's only a three percent base levy increase allowed. We need to continue to grow within our restrictions. We need to continue to grow our staffing. We need to do cost of living increases. And we need to be able to maintain the assets we have within those parameters. For personnel, uh, as I just mentioned, we need to, to be able to fund that cost of living. So we have budgeted a tentative increase for all staff, um, pending performance and other things, but we, we have the budget there. And then we budgeted to maintain our benefits package, which does hit benchmarks that are impressive and we want to keep that up. We want to keep our staff here and, and happy. So we have budgeted to stay the course with our personnel. On operations, we have budgeted for a larger facility. Um, Director Grove can elaborate on this, but we are just busting at the seams and given the budget availability, we may be looking into a larger facility. So that is, is in the budget. And then we've done some strategic improvements. We have new department managers in a couple of positions. They are doing internal audits of multiple things. And, and so we've budgeted to make sure that they can do those things successfully. Uh, for Cherry Lane, again, I'm extremely pleased to present to you a funding going toward this project. We're funded and, and I feel good about where we're at with Cherry Lane and I'm proud to say that because we only have so much money that we're working with at the end of the day. So this budget assumes nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand and change going toward Cherry Lane. Change orders will not cause us to lose sleep in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six with this number. Go ahead. That's the high points. Happy to drill down on any buckets and let Director Grove, uh, fill in any gaps that he'd like to.
Mr. Chair trustees, I'll jump in before you ask questions on this one so that I can get in front of at least one of them that I know you're gonna ask. So, uh, one being, uh, the larger facility and I'll get to that in a second, but the, one of the things that when, uh, we look at that general fund contribution, we need to fund the the, um, FFNE, uh, for the construction. And as we also are going through this with this current fiscal year, with the next fiscal year, and then from beyond, is to make sure that we continue to once we're done or as we're going through, but especially when we're done with the Cherry Lane renovation, to ensure that we have a proper balance in our repair and replacement fund going forward. Um, because that is what allows us to, uh, respond to, uh, a vehicle, you know, needing to be replaced. It, what allows us to respond to, you know, uh, an out-of-warranty HVAC unit that needs to, um, be replaced in the middle of winter. You know, those are things that we can't anticipate in some ways. Um, so we need to be able to have those funds and those are legislatively set, we can only use them to do repair and replacement in those funds. And so, um, we can't build a new building with it. We can't buy um, new things that we haven't had before with it. Um, they're, they're very limited funds, but it is one of the key pieces of how we are going to be doing the renovation is we have been putting away money into that for well over a decade, uh, to be able to, to offset the cost of, uh, the, the Cherry Lane renovation. Because the monies that we have from the plant facility levy do not cover the entirety of that. It is a, at about forty-six percent, I believe, of the overall cost of what, um, will be spent to do the renovation will be coming from the plant facility funds. The other fifty-two percent or fifty-four percent roughly, uh, at least last look was coming from the repair and replacement and, um, partially the general fund, um, over the course of these fiscal years, depending on when and where and what those funds go towards. Um, and so, um, that's, that's why you're seeing that large general fund, um, contribution for Cherry Lane there. Um, while it, it will be there for the entirety of the fiscal year, I wouldn't say at this time next year, I would not be surprised if we're looking at close to this number, um, or hopefully even more going into the repair and replacement fund to be able to carry over fiscal years to contribute towards the Cherry Lane renovation. And so we're putting that aside now in general fund to be able to buy some FFNE if it's, um, applicable. But if it's not applicable to buy within the fiscal year twenty-five time constraints, then it would go into the repair and replacement fund to be able to do the same thing, but in a different fiscal year. And so again, we're trying to maximize the tools that we have available and give ourselves the flexibility uh, to do everything that we are legally bound and allowed to do. And so with that, uh, with the larger facility, we're putting a placeholder number in there. Um, and, and what we're looking at is we have our admin building. We have the new Main Street building that is incredibly small, you know, uh, but it, what we would like to do is one unify those under one roof, but with that, we, we, we've known this and we're feeling it even more and more the closer we get to closing Cherry Lane, but we don't have as much shelf space as we need for this community. I mean, we don't have enough library space and we can't afford to build ourselves out of this situation. Even if someone donated us twenty million dollars to go build a new branch, we could not operate it because we can't grow our budget fast enough to keep, to meet that demand. Uh, we can't grow at the rate that the city grows, um, population-wise. Uh, we, we can't, growth is not allowed to pay for growth. And so that's why we have to take the three percent is to keep as close to that growth as we can, but it has outpaced us for decades at this point. And so we're doing the best we can to stay close, but, um, the larger facility will allow us to house circulating copies of materials that would be hold-only. So it wouldn't be materials that people would browse, but it'd be, um, materials that we would swap out, um, at the branches, but it would also be holdable so that we could send it, um, to be picked up at another location or sent through, um, our home delivery service to be delivered. And so we want to increase the availability overall, but it might not, we're not gonna be able to have the public access to it, uh, but still have the public availability of it. And so that is something we, we want to, to look at and we have multiple storage pieces. We have multiple storage that we're gonna be getting because of Cherry Lane. If we can cut those out and put those into a facility that combines our storage and, uh, our operational needs, we'll actually be saving money, um, in the long run. And so we're budgeting for it, but we don't have anything imminent.
So can I restate, just to make sure I get it?
Yes.
So, so right now we have two, let's call it two administrative office off-site locations, not part of a branch. You're saying if we found a bigger facility to bring both of those offices into that facility and even better if there was space for books, non, non-brouzable books, but still part of the collection that people could put on holds and pick up at a branch. And, and that would negate the need or lessen the need for more off-site storage during the Cherry renovation. Keep those books in the circulation and keep your staff together.
It, it would keep, well, the, the staff, yes, for the admin staff, yes, it would put the staff together. It would allow us to circulate more of the materials during the closure, but beyond the closure, we will have an even bigger collection available to the public than what we can hold during that time because we'd be filling the shelves at Cherry, but then we'd be able to backfill the collection space at the admin facility as well. And so we will actually be growing the collection by quite a bit as we go forward. There's things that we can do in an admin space that we can't do in a public space, for example. Depending on the facility, we can put in space saver shelving. And that allows, I don't know if you've ever been in a, like a big university lab or anything where they roll together. Not great for public use, but for staff use, they're great and you can get a lot more materials into a, a smaller footprint. And so we would have the ability potentially to really increase our holdings, uh, as a district. Um, even though we can't operationally afford staffing-wise and building-wise to have more publicly accessible spaces, we can find unique ways to increase the availability of our collection. So we're trying to get creative.
To be like a, a virtual physical branch.
More or less, yeah. I mean, it's like a ghost kitchen.
Okay.
I, I think that's maybe the best way to describe it is.
And does Meridian have such space?
Yes. Ish. Again, we are, we are being creative.
Other questions, gentlemen?
I, I, I just gotta interject. I mean, the Spanish Sun property, is that something that could potentially be built into something that would not only this off-site storage and admin center, but also, you know, the home delivery, all the vehicles are right there. Or, and eventually down the road, hey, the little drones go out flying for home delivery. All the vehicles are right there or and eventually down the road, hey, the little drones go out flying for home delivery, just like, you know, Amazon or something with Project Bronco.
Mr. Chair, trustee Cummings, yes, it it is potential. That is a potential option. I would say that is not a short term option due to the the cost of building a facility while doing the Cherry Lane piece. The upfront capital of that will be difficult because we're not replacing anything at that point. And so you can't use the repair and replacement. You would have to either use general funds or you would have to use a new plant facility levy or
Or a twenty million dollar donor.
Or twenty million dollar donor. I mean, I'm not gonna turn it down, right? But I'm gonna have questions. But I I don't think it's off the table that as the Linder overpass goes in over the next few years, that property becomes much more valuable. That is a high target area for what we're looking at right now anyway. Because that Linder corridor is is highly valuable to us as a district with Orchard Park and Cherry being directly off of Linder, Unbound being one mile off of Linder and then being able to take any major arterial off of Linder or Meridian Road to get to Pinnacle. You know, we're in, Meridian and Linder are probably our two most valuable north, south corridors that we're going to be focusing our short term search for so that we can be as centrally located as possible to maximize the routing of our home delivery and internal courier services, but also our ability to respond to needs at the branches from an admin perspective so that we're not, you know, all the way up here at Orchard Park and then taking thirty minutes to get to to Pinnacle. We want to be as close to everyone as we can, which, you know, when you're spread out nine miles, can be really difficult, but doing our best to stay is centrally located. I would say, you know, a mile off the mile to mile and a half off the freeway. It's kind of a sweet spot for us in a lot of ways. Which would include the Spanish Sun Way. I would personally like to see that probably in the long term become a branch. It has a higher value location wise in proximity to homes and the corridor for public access than it does for an admin building. For me, an admin building can take a non prime location and be more, can be just as successful at a cheaper lease rate rather than going at a twenty six square foot lease rate with a triple net of four dollars. You're looking at a twelve to sixteen dollar square foot rate with a two dollar triple net. And so the the cost savings, because we can't buy a building, we can't build a building, we're going to need at least whatever we have for the short term at least. We can do that at a much cheaper rate in a non prime location, taking a class B or a low class A facility. We don't have much else other than that in Meridian to be able to to get those needs. And I would say, short term for me on something like that is about five years locked in. And then we can kind of assess from there. But it's it, we're looking at a a short to medium term solution for admin. Whereas, you know, the branches, we can get those permanent locations that we just, we're just not really there for us in the admin side. Sorry, that was an extremely long way of saying, yes, the Spanish Sun Way is possible, but not right now.
All right. Any further questions on the fiscal year twenty six presentation? So we get number, one more thing from me, sorry. We get numbers from the state first of August, first week of August, and then we have our, so how mu- how much is this likely to change?
Not much, maybe two percent, as Director Grove mentioned. We will receive, Mr. Chair, we will receive final tax values, final, you know, assessment role values for the property that we will essentially be taxing the first Monday in August.
And if it, let's say it's two percent, would that two percent be applied equally across these categories or?
We'll put it to Cherry Lane. We'll put it to that Cherry Lane general fund, fuck it.
Okay. Anything else?
Mr. Chair, do we need a motion or anything to set this August fifth or sixth is what I heard?
So, Mr. Chair, trustees, there's no action item that is needed. It's more, are you all available on August sixth to have a meeting to set this as publication? I'd say, reach out to me in the next week to make sure that we can properly schedule that and get it posted. But in terms of action item, we don't need an action item to create a meeting. This will just be largely down to your availability to make sure that we are are at a minimum at quorum to hit that posting.
Okay. How about you send out an email tomorrow and just say, is August sixth okay? And get an answer from all five?
I will, I will definitely do that. Thank you, Chair.
All right, number nine. Cherry Lane branch closure.
Mr. Chair, that one's me again. So this is a big one. I would say that I've had a lot of consternation on this over the last year leading up to this moment. So I didn't have solid answers driving over here. I did, however, get a phone call that made me a lot more comfortable with what I'm about to ask, which is we need to close the branch at Cherry Lane to do these renovations. There is absolutely no way to keep Cherry Lane open while doing this renovations. These are life support systems. These are access to the to the site issues. You know, we're gonna be tearing up parking lots. We're gonna be taking out the entire HVAC. There won't be power for several months as they put in new transformers and realign everything. They take out the sprinkler systems, the dual sprinkler systems, there's two in the dome area, which is really weird. But I digress. There's just no physical way that we would be able to keep this open. And so we can actually expedite how fast the the process goes by closing the whole thing. When they don't have to work around things, they can really get through things a lot faster. And so what we need to do is to get board action tonight to close the library at Cherry Lane. We had been targeting August second in talking with the architects, the engineers. And then later today, when I spoke with the city planning department, I I feel much more comfortable asking you all if we could set a close date at as August ninth of this next month. And by setting that August ninth, that will allow us to go through the end of day Saturday, August ninth. And then we will have the next three weeks to move out the twenty eight year accumulation within the building and get the site ready for CM to come in and begin demolition first and then renovation after that with both thirteen twenty six, but also twelve fifty, which is the R annex building that we have already vacated. And so that is, in a nutshell, the ask is that a motion is provided and and move forward to formally set the close date for Cherry Lane as August ninth of twenty twenty five for the purposes of renovation. This will allow us to go forward with noticing the public via our website, social media, press release, and then information within the Cherry Lane branch itself. And then it will also allow us to formally set in motion pieces such as the courier delivery for links to be able to cancel Cherry Lane as a whole pickup location. All these, all these multitude of things that have to get triggered and and run through. You know, in a perfect world, I would love to say that we had all this information and we could say, six months from now, this is what we're going to do. And with the complexities of the site access that we've had, I mean, we've been talking about this project for in detail, I'd say, for over a year now. But the site access piece is what has really tripped us up. And it's still giving us quite a bit of consternation. But while we might not have the exacts from, are we taking access off of Cherry Lane? Are we taking access off Cherry Lane using our current entrance? Are we taking access off Cherry Lane using the proposed entrance off of the twelve fifty property? Or are we going through the DA modification and taking access off of Leisure Lane? I don't know that with a hundred percent certainty, but according to the city, according to the architects, according to engineers, we are confidently able to go forward with the renovation and the demolition. So the renovation of the Train Lane branch and the demolition and site preparation of the parking lot and the demolition of the annex while we finalize the final details of access. We have to have access one way or the other. And so it will get done, but I don't have a one hundred percent confirmation from ACHD on what they will do. But I'm confident I will get there very soon.
How soon?
Soon, I would say. I I don't, I don't want to say, I guess, put a date on it because it's not in our hands at this point. It's with the ACHD and then back to the city and then back to, like, there's a little bit more back and forth. But I will say that as a team internally, as of today, we are taking a much more forceful, hands on approach to this rather than kind of having our 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 team of, you know, engineers and architects do it solely. We're going to be boots on the ground doing this because I can't wait for someone else to figure this out anymore. So we had given them this and it's not where I would want it. My, if if this was my staff, I would be, you know, angry at them. And, you know, I'm upset with the contractors on this, you know. But we're gonna get it done and it I will do everything in my power to have it by the August twentieth meeting in full detail. But all of the design work aspects of the of it have been submitted. We're we're in the certificate of zoning compliance right now. So all of that paperwork has been submitted. Everything's done. We just don't have the final sign off on where people will enter and exit.
So worst case scenario, we still have, we could still use the current entrance and exit if we had to.
Yes.
I know there'd be changes in in design and all that, but we we have access and to our property.
Correct. We might not have access to twelve fifty, so the annex site at that point. But at a bare minimum, we can use exactly the site layout that we have. It's not good for anybody at that point, but it is it is possible. So.
And at this point, our preferred access still is is through the annex driveway now.
Correct, to take access where the access point at the annex is and to close the current entrance at Cherry. That is our proposal. We had, you know, as, you know, tried to get access off Leisure Lane, ran into all of those roadblocks. We might have to go that way still. We've been very clear about that in terms of if this is what they force us to go through and do with ACHD in the city and then we have to go that route and go through the development agreement modification. And, you know, those are outside of our control and but we will get there. The the site access is extremely important, but it doesn't stop us from moving forward with the rest of the project to get started.
And if we went ahead, closed, closed the branch and started the demo, is there anything that would stop us from being able to continue? Is that, I don't want to close that branch and, you know, and then suddenly in six months, nothing has happened and?
No, so we have been guaranteed that the demo work will begin. So that is not contingent on anything else. The demo work is like to get rid of the the property at the annex site. For example, like that is demolition only, like that can start in September as soon as they have the demo permit and they have the staff assigned to it from CM company and their contractors. And they're already working on that. It might not be September second, but it might be September eleventh or something like that. But in the first half of September, we will see movement.
Okay.
Like visible outside movement, there'll be internal things constantly going. But that's where we're at. If we don't take action on these things now.
Then we run into fiscal year calendars.
We're gonna be running into a a huge delay potential, especially as we get closer to winter. If things aren't done by winter, we have to wait till spring. And so that's my impetus for really needing to get this stuff going is if we don't, it's not, at this time of year, a one or two month delay can end up being a six month delay if weather hits us wrong. And so can we get all the outside stuff started now so that we're not having to start that in the spring? So that's my risk. Because as we've presented in the amended budget and we've been talking about for the last several months, we have been aggressively using attrition in our locations. We haven't been purchasing material for Cherry Lane. We haven't been doing XYZ. And so we're at a major crossroads. If if we don't go forward with it now, it 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 will be painful in a multitude of ways. I I will have a lot more gray hairs if if that is the case or no hair, so.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Chair and Director, I, my, my one question is just to make sure that we've contacted staff and the public appropriately. I think my heart just goes out to any poor kid who is in our summer reading program and suddenly a library closes and their parents don't know where to go. I don't want to find myself in a couple of years where some kid goes, I don't know how to read because we didn't keep my life. Not that we're the only cause, right? So I just want to make sure that we're doing the steps that give the patrons we support places to go, information about how to continue this kind of stuff.
So, Mr. Chair, trustee Castle, yes. I mean, yes and no, I guess, and a little bit like the no part being ideally, you know, it'd be great to have a sixth month campaign knock on every door and tell every single person. That's just not gonna happen. If we look back, this was something that we talked about seven, six, seven years ago. The voters passed it six years ago. So this has been on the chopping block, right? Like this has been a very well known thing that is coming, right? We've been talking about it in this board meeting for well over a year and in detail. But even in reference, as we've done all three of the previous projects with Unbound in twenty twenty and finishing in twenty twenty one with this building Orchard Park opening in twenty twenty three, with Pinnacle opening in twenty twenty four. And the reason we chose to do Pinnacle and Orchard Park before doing Cherry Lane is Cherry Lane is the most expensive, most complicated and the most impact to the public for what we have been able to offer. By opening Orchard Park, by opening Pinnacle, we now have a combined twenty seven thousand square feet to offset the twenty seven thousand square feet of Cherry Lane. Prior to that, if we had gone forward with Cherry Lane and only had Silverstone, that was four thousand square feet to offset. There's no way we didn't have a programmer and we didn't have space like. And so we did those all in preparation to get to where we are today. We doubled down on the the home delivery service, that something that, you know, had almost been gotten rid of at one point. And we instead have doubled that, you know, I think the last stats that I saw was we delivered thirteen thousand items last year. I wouldn't, won't be surprised if that number gets close to twenty thousand while we're closed. And we have the capacity to to do that. We have the capacity to expand that both from staff and and operationally, like how we do some of those things will be tight hundred percent. But we have the the structure to to expand, to contract the all, everything that we've done over the last three years since I became. The, all, everything that we've done over the last three years since I came on is been structured to get us to this point. We have all of our teams in the branches structured the same way. So we can help offset attrition by moving people into the exact same position at other locations. We can help fill in and support by pulling one team out to take one team in. We, we have a lot of ability to adapt with the, the structure that we have now to all these changes. And so, yes, I would, in a, I would love to be able to keep a, a like sized facility open while, you know, to do it, but with how much all these things cost is just not realistic in any way to, to truly offset that, that need. And so between home delivery, Bookmobile, the Mobi Sprinter, doing services like computer, mobile computer lab and programs. And then our traditional branches of Orchard Park, Pinnacle, and then our business technology branch of Unbound, you know, at a certain point, we have to just kind of say, we're doing the best we can. And I think that's kind of where we're at on some of that is, yeah, I would love to not have to do that. Or I would love to be able to, you know, have this replacement facility. We just can't. So, again, if someone wants to give us twenty million dollars, maybe we, we have other options on the table, but no one's coming with that check that I've seen.
So thank you, Mr. Chair and Director.
Josh, any questions?
Just, I think it's worth knowing that school in the West Side of the School District starts on August thirteenth, four days after the proposed closure. So if I'm hearing correctly, you're looking for an action item to put the stake in the ground of August ninth. Hearing that, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the closure of the Cherry Lane Branch for renovations effective August ninth, twenty twenty five.
I second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Other questions? All in favor? I, any pose, motion carries. I would say too, just you talk about publicity at that branch, let's put publicity here too. So I mean, all the branches so that they know Cherry, because the word will get out. And once somebody stops by once and sees that it's closed and sees on the sign, oh, I need to go here or there, they'll figure it out.
We, we, we can definitely do that. Dan and his team were already have a lot planned, ready to go. I know we have a press release that is in its final stages of being ready. We just had to wait to get, you know, through tonight. And so that should be going out tomorrow. And a lot of the marketing materials will, will begin appearing as early as tomorrow, but much more by the middle of next week.
And didn't I see something on one of the TV stations recently about it too?
Possibly. I know Boise Dev had picked it up about two weeks ago.
All right, number twelve, future agenda items. We talked, Nick, about the internet only library card. Give us more details on that. Strategic plan, you said September, starting in September and hopefully by December. I think we got plenty of time. Let's do it right. If it takes longer than that, that's fine. But if you want to give us an update, anytime, that's good too. Had something else? Any other items from you two for next time other than the already full agenda? Okay. Everybody, thanks for your time. It is eight thirty four and our meeting is adjourned.